The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to our town council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Jol, Jol Kristensen?
Here.
Councilor Giannoni?
Here.
Mayor Zinske?
Here.
Councilor Luddy?
Here.
Councilor Pejman Arrow?
Here.
Councilor Pianessa?
Here.
Councilor Rossok?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. So, first up on our agenda is we have a recognition of Officer Daniel Ether, Ether. And if I can, let me just mention he, I have a proclamation which I'll read and then I'll call you up. And obviously, it's, the procl- the award that is awarded every year to the officer with the most drunk driving arrests is in honor of Jeffrey Kazner. Police officer was struck and killed by a drunk driver back on February 2nd, 1985, while directing traffic at an automobile accident on the Berlin Turnpike. The suspect was sentenced to 16 months in jail, but was killed in a motorcycle accident the weekend before he was to begin his sentence. Officer Kazner had served with the agency for only three months. He was survived by his parents, brother, two sisters, and his brother at the time was a Berlin police officer at that time as well. I asked the family to be here tonight. Unfortunately, they had a family emergency hospitalization, so we will honor Officer Kazner as well on a, on a upcoming meeting. So tonight, we will honor Officer Ether. So, let me read this proclamation. "Town of Berlin Town Council hereby recognizes Police Officer Daniel Ether. Officer Ether was this year's recipient of the Jeffrey Kazner Award, in which Chief Klett presented him the award at the graveside ceremony on May 15th, 2019. The Jeffrey Kazner Award is awarded annually to the officer who is at the forefront of the department in affecting driving under the influence arrests. Officer Ether has been with the department since June of 2016, and last year, he led the department's efforts against drunk driving enforcement, having made 15 percent of all the DUI arrests in 2018. Also, Officer Ether is a Berlin native and is a veteran of the Connecticut Army National Guard. So, in recognition of your years of service to the town and your many contributions to improve the quality of life here in Berlin, the town council salutes Police Officer Ether dated this 18th day of June, 2019. Myself, Mark Zinske, the mayor." So, line up, officers. Chief. Congratulations. We appreciate all your hard work in keeping the town safe and all the other many things that you and all the officers do. Chief, appreciate your department. So, I'm gonna present that to you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. So, now we have our audience of citizens.
Thank you.
So, we have Mary Catherine Rose. The Rose.
Council, hello. Good evening and, audience of citizens. I'm here to talk about Bicentennial Park, hot button issue. Yesterday, I, in the nice weather, I took a ride to-
Oh, yeah. Just, name and address, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Mary Catherine Rose, 26 Woodville Lane, Kensington. I took a ride to other open space properties. I went to the Chakowsky Farm, Kensington Orchards, and the Shear property, which is where the gardens are. And I took a short walk in two of them. The Shear property is just, grass is high, so unless you want to get a tick-borne illness, you're not going to walk there. And then I went to Bicentennial. I hadn't been there in a while. Without my dogs, I just went there to just take a walk a little bit and refresh my memory of how beautiful it was. And one thing struck me. The difference between Bicentennial and those other properties is, it doesn't have a parking lot. All are open. I don't know about the other ones. There's other open space places that I don't even know where they are. They all have a parking lot, those three. A nice gravel parking lot or whatever. And Bicentennial, as popular as it is, has a cul-de-sac that's part of a public road. No parking lot. It needs a parking lot. We need to relieve those neighbors that are near that park. We can't stop the popularity of that park unless we limit the use of that park. But we can alleviate the problem of parking in the cul-de-sac. And so, we need a parking lot. And I know I've heard this word aquifer thrown around. There's an aquifer. Can't do anything because there's an aquifer. I really think there has to be some serious research done to see if there isn't some way to put, even if it's gravel, doesn't have to be paved, inside the fence for six, seven cars to park. Get it inside, away from the cul-de-sac, and alleviate the problem of people who unfortunately, yesterday, when I was there, I saw a man get out of the car on the cul-de-sac, let his two dogs out of his car, and they ran around a little bit on the grass. I'm not sure if they went in someone's yard or if they were just on that grassy area. And I thought I'd be very nice and remind him that he's supposed to leash his dogs into the park, at least. And he said to me, "Oh, well, they have electric collars." And he goes like this, which is a whole nother story. Again, if you are going to do a leash ordinance, don't even talk about electric collars. I'm, I'm not talking about the ones that have, that people have around their property. I'm talking about when they put these things on and then they have a thing in their hand and they think that's going to stop their animal from doing whatever it is they don't want them to do. I have a short story about one time when I went to Bicentennial Park with my four-month-old chocolate lab puppy. And there was a woman in Bicentennial, and she had two Dalmatians. And they were, she was training them, I believe. Didn't think anything of it. And so, we're romping along and one of those Dalmatians, they get the look on their face and they hunker down. I was like, "It's coming for my dog." And it did. And she's pushing that button on those electric collars until, she could push it forever. And that thing got right down on my dog's neck and drew, drew blood. And I said a few uncomfortable things and said, "You should not be here. Don't ever come back here again. I hope I never see you again. I will dial 911." And never saw her again. I don't know if she ever went back or not with her dogs. But those things are useless. So, please, don't include them in any leash ordinance that you do. Make it a leash. Don't include Bicentennial Park. Give us a parking lot. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Next on the list, Greta Stiefel. Just name and address, Greta, if you would. Thank you.
Greta Stiefel, 232 Percival Avenue. I brought show and tell. I brought a Save-A-Hart trap. The subject of my speech will be about what's going on with what is deemed feral cats by Jan Lund, but actually are not feral cats. I'll tell you a little story. I'll try to make it quick. I have an advanced rare cancer, and I've had it for almost four years. In that time, I have taken care of religiously every day, except for when I can't and I'm in a hospital and I have other people helping me. But I had found these cats that were thrown out like trash, by Jan Lund, actually. They were clipped and taken out on town property and left there to fend for themselves. The woman that lost her rent at, lived at the train on the tracks was an alcoholic and she got evicted. And these cats went out with her and she left them out. And then this woman, her daughter, was feeding these cats. Well, anyway, she was doing it intimately. These cats were not very, in very good health, so I started to feed them. And because I have huge compassion for animals, as a matter of fact, I tried to bring a charter for compassion here in this town about four years ago, as I got sick. Was denied to have that come part of the town, and maybe we should revisit that at some point. Anyway, getting back to the cats, I had religiously gone through rain, snow, sub-zero temperatures, feeding them, caring for them, spending thousands of dollars of my money to keep them alive. And then when I got sick, it became a little bit of a problem, but I still did it. And I had asked repeatedly for help from FOBAC, which I just found out that Jan Lund runs that whole shebang. And I had repeatedly requested from the town, at the time Denise McNair, and recently with Jack Healy, and now with Mark, who's, who's been very good in helping. But I've been told these cats were my problem, my responsibility. I even have a letter that was put together that told me, "These cats are my problem, my responsibility," and that I had to take care of them. And this all became a heightened level of, of an issue when the town bought or sold the property to Mark Lovely, Lovely Construction, which that closing will happen, I believe, in August, and the property was sold in, in April. I immediately, when I found out that was happening, I got very nervous about what was going to happen to these cats and tried to get an action plan in place. And so, the story goes, I was denied Save-A-Hart traps. I was told I had to take care of it myself, and I actually trapped two cats in makeshift laundry baskets because the town told me I was not going to be supplied any Save-A-Hart traps. I don't know how much they cost, but I'm on social security disability and all the money that I was using was going for the cats. So, not only was I denied to get traps, I was put at risk, knowing I have cancer, knowing that I am as sick as I am, I was denied basic things to try to get these cats secured. So, I ended up getting scratched and I ended up having to go for medical treatment. And you know how scary that was, to have rabies series on top of the cancer? Well, it was. And, uh, thank God, the cats didn't have rabies. But I rescued two of these original eight. There are, or were, six in this colony. Only two have been saved by the Town of Berlin in the last two weeks. They locked the place down, so I couldn't even go in to get my people, who are professional trappers, who would have done it in a day or two, and gotten most of them. But I was denied. I was actually more or less threatened by police, you know, with, and this has happened before, where I've gotten, trying to help with sick or injured cats, and I was actually, a bogus 911 was called on me. And Deputy Chief Klett is here, I believe, and I think he would remember that. In any case, I do not want to make any trouble for the town, but I am sick and tired of my tax dollars being spent on things. And when we, I can't even have things done the right way, which should have been done the right way, to get these cats secured in the very beginning, when I asked for the help and I was denied the help, and I was told it was my problem. I have a letter to prove it. And it's just really appalling, it's disgusting, it's upsetting. Not only is it wrong with what the town has done, I was put at risk and they didn't care. And they only started to care about these cats when that property was sold. And I actually spoke to Mark Lovely, and he said that there was no rush. And, you know, August was the time. And so, there was plenty of time, actually, to get these cats secured. So, now what's happened is these four little cats that would actually come to me when I would call them, I would actually be able to pet them while they would eat. That's not feral. If a cat calls out, if you call out to a cat, they, and you give them a name, and after a time, they come to you, that's not feral. These were somebody's cats at one time. And by force of what happened to them, they became scared, but they were not feral. But of course, Jan Lund is an expert in animal care, and she deemed them feral. I have some more stories about Jan Lund, but that's another story, another day, and I want to be put on the agenda to speak about all of that, to do with her and her job and many other things that have to do with animal control. I have videos and pictures, I have documents, and, you know, I do want to address what's been going on. And a lot of the people in town, well, let's put it this way. What Jan Lund has done by throwing those cats out, putting me at risk, denying me to even have returned phone calls and be courteous in the beginning, to have my calls returned. And when I got desperate, I called FOBAC. I didn't know FOBAC was Jan Lund. I just found that out from this nice lady over here. I am just appalled the way the things go on here in the town. I, I want answers. I want to know tonight from you, Mark. I left you an email. I don't know if you received it. I want to get my people on the ground and get those cats. Because the way that it's working is not working. Trapping three hours into the morning, it's not cutting it. That's why you've only had a success with two cats. That other cat was somebody else's cat, I think. I don't know. But the success rate over two weeks is poor, and these cats have dispersed. And I would go every day to call out to them, and I, I saw four last week, three the other day, zero now for the last several days. So, they are, they are freaked out and they've dispersed. And there was no reason to mow down their habitat that they became accustomed to because it freaked them out and they went into hiding. And for several days, there was no food or water. There wasn't even basic needs, water for these cats. And it's just very upsetting to me because I cared about these cats. I care about these cats very much. I'm a huge animal advocate. I've rescued a lot of dogs. Never really got into the cat thing, but I, I actually love cats now. And I just find it disgusting that you have an animal control officer that really doesn't care. She really doesn't care. And I have stories, enough of them, to have them come forward to prove that fact. So, I'd like to know what you're going to do about it, these cats, the remaining cats. Any answers?
We are in the, so, Greta, if you would bear with us for a moment, let me just finish. We have three other speakers for the audience of citizens.
Sure.
And at the conclusion of that, Town Manager, Town Attorney, who have, who you have met with.
Yes, of cour- well, I met Jennifer this, in the elevator.
Yeah. But, I mean, we, we've been talking to you for a while.
No, I know. But, you know, it's, it's only been in the last two weeks that you have been talking to me. The last four years, you've not been talking to me. Jan Lund has been controlling everything, and I have begged you people for help. Now, Mark is exonerated from this. Jack Healy, for the last year, he promised me, gave me his word, and basically went back on his word, apparently, because the letter that I got, saying that I had until June 30th to get these cats out, should have been honored. You guys did a about-face and locked me down and didn't give me a chance to get these cats out. And I would have gotten them. Because I have people that do this for a living, and they're good at it.
So, let us just finish the, the audience of citizens.
Sure.
And we will address that, because I, I think it should be addressed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greta. Okay. So, let's just, we have three people on the list here for, Marcela Winok?
Yeah.
You're good? Okay. Uh, yes, just Susan, uh-
Kwasniewski.
Yes.
Are you just going to basically agree with what Mary Catherine said?
Yes.
And, um-
The Bicentennial.
I don't know if I could ask a naive question about-
You need to go.
You need to stand up. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
You have to tell me your name.
My name is Susan Kwasniewski, and I live at 1111 Kensington Road. I second what Mary Catherine said about Bicentennial Park. We need a parking space. Please leave the leash ordinance the way it is for us. Thank you. I have a naive question about the low-income housing coming in. Is it not possible for the town just to refund that developer his money, reclaim it as a park and leave it be? Thank you.
Okay. Thank, um, yeah, I mean, it's a sensitive question to talk about, only because we do have a, an open hearing at Planning and Zoning. And you do understand that that hearing is, Planning and Zoning is just for a zone change at the moment? So, as it stands right now, you know, so-
Text amendment to it.
Huh?
Text amendment.
Text amendment, yeah. So, it stands right now, it's still an open hearing, we will have to wait and see what, what Planning and Zoning does with that. And then, so there's no, although there may be talk from the developer and then the community about whatever he says he may or may not do, there's no, you know, site plan amendment yet out there for anything till, a lot of it depends on what Planning and Zoning does. And again, you know, sensitive issue at the moment, but there is, that whole area, obviously, is subject to an agreement. When Pistol Creek, I guess, was sold to the town, and, you know, don't really know all the particulars, wasn't, wasn't involved then, but there is an agreement with that developer, which states certain things, which, you know, that's been reviewed by the Town Attorney to, to be a valid agreement in the town's estimation, but that's, we're, we're not really there yet. It's still with the, with Planning and Zoning. If, if some changes get requested, if things get passed, then we'll see where that goes. But we, we haven't reached a point. And with an open public hearing, it really is still in the purview of Planning and-
Last one, I'll go to the next.
Yeah, no, then-
It's a naive question, isn't it?
No, it's not. It's not naive at all. I mean, I think people need to understand that.
Put the money back and-
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah. I'm not sure that's an option, but just, just with my legal hat on, but, but, but-
Naive question.
Yeah. No, no, it's not naive at all. But, but, so, yeah, we'll, we'll just, you know, the council is paying attention to it, the town, obviously, and it, it kind of sits with Planning and Zoning at the, at the moment. So, we'll, we'll see how that, how that goes. So, one other person on the list, Heidi. Are you Heidi?
I am, but I thought that was the finance chief, so I'm sorry.
Oh.
She agrees with the, I, I agree.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Good. That's good. And, and you ladies know, I mean, you've been to, so it's still, is, still sits with the ordinance committee. We haven't decided, made, made that decision yet, and many of you were at the Conservation Commission the other night, too, where we had that meeting. So, we'll be going back to the ordinance committee.
I was sent to Parks and Rec. They sent me to here.
Okay.
So, I'm just-
I got you.
I'm doing the round.
Yeah, we're-
I'm constructing.
Yeah, it will, it, instructed by Parks and Rec?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, that's interesting, but-
That they don't have any land available that's not in use.
Okay.
You're not in charge of that aspect of it anymore, and they suggested I come to the Town Council to just kind of finding a space or-
Oh, we're there. Yeah, and we're, and-
Forward.
And we're there. So, it depends on what the ordinance committee comes up with, and, and I think we certainly heard from the Conservation Commission, which was the, was the point of the meeting the other night. And we'll go back to ordinance and, and figure out where we, where we go from here, so. And the Bicentennial Park issue, I know that was, that was an issue back Planning and Zoning years ago, and I, the parking, I, I know we talked about the parking back then. I don't, I don't remember the actual, what the actual, I mean, the decision was not to do it. I can't remember what the actual reasoning was, it's many years ago now, but, yeah, we'll, we'll still be discussing that, Bicentennial. So, yes.
You're open to no roads.
Yes, we'll check it out. Yeah.
I just, you, you have to get a chance.
You don't have to sign up. You know, you can, yes, absolutely. There's a sign up, but if you don't sign up, you're, come on up, say your name and address, and we're happy to hear from you.
Um, I just learned, I'm sorry. My name is Amy Foster, 72 Circle Wood Drive. I just learned of this meeting literally like a half hour ago, so, excuse my appearance and my not being really together right now, but I just want to speak for Jan Lund. I've been a volunteer for Friends of Berlin Animal Control, FOBAC, for 20-ish years, since I moved into town, since I, since I moved here. I, I, my first house was on Skinner Road, and I would drive by the old dog pound, you know, at that time, and it would just bring by, back memories of when I was a little kid, driving by in Killingsworth, this big municipal dog pound, and just always wondering what happened in there. And one day, you know, I saw Jan, she had a little weekly, in the rare, in the Citizen, like pet owner of the week. I'm like, all right, she's an animal control officer. All I could think about is the dog catcher from the old days, that, that, you know, that, I don't know. So, one day, I, you know, I saw she has that little thing in the paper, she's got to be pretty good, and she, you know, at, you know, shows what dogs and cats are available. So, I brought a bunch of blankets and things that I had and asked her if she needed them. And I learned that there was actually a volunteer group. And I immediately joined, and, and it's an awesome organization. Jan and I, myself and Jan, we got our 5031, oh God, did I say that right? The nonprofit status. We worked really hard. We're, you know, a professional group, very casual and professional, but we do some awesome things. And we are Friends of Berlin Animal Control. Jan is Berlin Animal Control. We've had other animal control officers that are that old frightening image that I have of, of the dog catcher with a net and, you know, they're all bad and everything. We've, I've seen those works of such. Jan, as far as feral cats go, and Greta, we spoke on the phone. You called FOBAC, and I answered you. I called you back.
You know what? You know what? We can't, we can't, we can't, just, just-
Okay.
We don't, yeah, we don't want to really-
I want to say about the feral cat specifically. Jan herself, along with the help of her friends, her volunteers, we formed a Central Connecticut Cat Project. It's a low-cost, monthly spay-neuter clinic for anyone, but we really encourage people with feral cat colonies. We assist in the TNR program, the Trap Neuter Release. We will go set up traps. Yeah, sometimes a cat, a feral cat, a wild cat, will stay in that cage for overnight. You know, that's sad. But if you look at statistics, two feral cats in the community, two feral cats, given they have maybe two litters a year, which they almost always do, those litters have cats kittens, usually only two or three survive in a litter of five because infection, starvation, weather, predators, all that. So, even with only two and three surviving each litter twice a year, cumulatively, over 10 years, that's over a million cats. It's, it's ridiculous. It's, Trap Neuter Release is necessary, not just for these poor creatures, who I love, though they're not pets, but for the community. They get in dumpsters, they, you know, a lot of people don't like cats for that reason. They can be a nuisance. We got to control the population. It's, it's not always pretty, but it's necessary. And this is coming from a true passionate animal lover. Okay? It's, we raise money to pay for this, for the, for the procedure. We get, we have a food bank in town for people in need to feed their pets. FOBAC's great, and we wouldn't be here if it weren't for Jan Lund. History goes way back, but the, the cats, as far as those specific cats behind there, my understanding is, a woman who used to live in that area, who helped, who assisted with the Trap Neuter Release, she moved and took several of the cats with her. From what I understand, the cats that we've, that have been trapped recently are earnotched, which is a clear sign of they've already been altered. Leave them alone. If you see, if you get one in your trap, you can let it go. It doesn't need to be altered. And that's it. And I'm not sure, but I, I'm almost positive that it was Jan Lund who got the town to agree to shelter cats. Her job never required it. It was her hard work for it to allow the, and now she has a dedicated cattery at the shelter. That's only because of Jan. She loves animals. She does the right thing. When she has to shoot a rabid raccoon, she cries every time. That's part of her job. It's, it's sickening, it's the part that she hates, she's never missed, but it's a, it's a job as well. You know, she's here to protect the animals, but first and foremost, to protect the town. Okay? That's what animal control is. It's, it's not animal rescue. She, you know, she brought that into it. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate your comments. So, anybody else from the audience?
I'd like to come back up because that was, I could have-
Okay, that's what animal control is, it's, it's not animal rescue. She, you know, she brought that into it. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate your comments. So, anybody else from the audience?
I'd like to come back up because that was, I could have brought the control to her one.
Oh, I know, Greta.
You can't come back up.
Yeah.
I would like to just-
But-
One second, for one minute and just have a, have a-
One minute, Greta, that's it, and then we'll, we have to close the audience of citizens.
That's fine, that's fine. Um, that's all well and good that you're a, a cheerleader for Jan, okay? A lot of towns have the same exact programs, so Jan didn't do anything out of the ordinary, okay, just so you know. They, she did not. But you're part of FOBAC, you're part of the 501(c)(3), so of course you're gonna say wonderful things. Um, perhaps you then know about the dog Hugo that was euthanized, you know about that, right? Okay, and you, I'm sure you know a lot of other things, too. I, I will say that, I will say that-
Wait, 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 wait.
I will say that, for, this is not about Jan Lund, this is about these cats that were trapped, that were taking care of me for the last four years, and that are now hanging in the balance, and that are not being secured quickly enough, that's what this is about. This is not about-
Yes, please.
Well, that's what, well, she should not have come up to talk about Jan Lund and being a cheerleader for her.
Greta, let's, let's, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Okay, any other buddy from the audience of citizens? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. Um, so, we have our agenda, obviously, but I, but I, there are points that came up, um, I will look to our town attorney and our town manager just to, uh, you know, the council has been privy to some of the correspondence between, uh, Greta and the town, but I just want to make sure the town council is, got all the information.
Yes.
So if we have just a minute or two of what has transpired and where we're at.
Sure, um, I'd be happy to give a, a quick-
Yeah.
-history of the last couple of weeks. So one of, um, when Jack was, was leaving, um, he was trying to button up a lot, a lot of little issues, um, and one of them being, uh, addressing the cats on Farmington Avenue. He issued Ms. Stiefel an email stating that, um, she is to remove the cats, um, from the property as well as the structures that, that she put, put on, put on the property. Um, Ms. Stiefel quickly responded, um, stating that, um, she didn't know how to trap cats, she didn't have the means, she was fearful of, um, getting hurt, getting rabies, um, in doing that, and she, um, also was having, um, treatments, um, that was also gonna help her, prohibit her from, uh, meeting the deadline set. Um, so, learning all these facts, um, we were, we were looking, look, looking at a new way to address the situation. The town has animal control officers that have the skill set to trap, the town has the means to, to trap, and, and it is on town property. Um, so, we took the responsibility of taking, um, trapping and taking for these animals, taking care of these animals. We came up a plan to do so, the animals were gonna be trapped, brought to the animal control facility, vetted, um, receive whatever vaccinations, um, were needed, and we're gonna find homes for them. Um, we were, um, Greta did find a family that was happy to take the cats, um, and they've, um, taken two of the cats that, that have been captured, two of the three. To address, I think the only question that, uh, that Ms. Stiefel, uh, asked here tonight was whether, um, if she, if we would let her, her people, I guess she has identified people that, that are skilled trappers, um, to, to, onto the property to do the trapping. Um, I would, um, be happy to address that, um, that idea with the animal control officer, um, and, and council, just to see what, what we can, uh, what we can do about that. But if, uh, in the meantime, if you want to, um, see if those people can secure, um, certificates of liability, is that the right term, um, for that, then in the meantime, you can do that, and then we can, we can address that with, with our ACO and see if, um, we can add another phase to that plan.
Excuse me, Mark, who owns the property?
The town does.
Okay.
The town, um, it went under a purchase and sale-
I was confused in the story that it was Lovely's property.
No, we signed a purchase and sale agreement, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, but, but the closing isn't gonna happen until, um, environmental remediation is, is, is done, so, so the town still owns it right now.
Okay. So that's where we stand, counselor? Anything to add?
Yes, can I just add one additional factual item? Um, in terms of the determination of whether the cats are feral, that is made by the vet, that is not made by the animal control officers that have been trapping. I think that that is a very important point. So the, the two cats, and I don't know whether the third was determined to be feral or not, but I know that the initial two cats that were determined to be feral, the two cats that were captured first, that determination was made by the veterinarian that did the initial vetting, not by the ACO.
And that was a, uh, misunderstanding of the process on my part, so I have represented that it was the ACO, but-
So then prior to anybody securing a certificate of liability or allowing anybody onto, onto town property because it is a liability, then they'd have to be, um, pretty much pronounced feral by the veterinarian, by vet?
No, um, what Ms. Stiefel is proposing is to use individuals that she knows that are capable of trapping. Um, i- it is not until the cat is in fact trapped that they undergo initial vetting. Um, and what that consists of, I guess, is a determination of their status of whether they're feral or not, and then initial inoculations for rabies and such. Um, and then i- if they're determined, my understanding of the procedure is that if they're determined not to be feral and potentially somebody's pet that just has been rendered homeless, whether they, you know, they've strayed from their home or whatever, then there is a notification that's actually published so that, uh, the potential pet owner can come forward and actually claim the animal. And then beyond that, if they don't claim within a certain set period, I believe it's seven days from the publication, then that animal can be adopted.
Okay.
And that's the process, and that's the process for dogs and cats.
I just have, I just have a quick question for you also, um, and I, I applaud the idea of having her personnel come and trap if they're good at that, but along with a liability, should there be some sort of release that's signed? Because essentially, if they're doing work of the town, they essentially are agents of the town, and heaven forbid one of them were to get hurt or something like that, I, I don't, I don't think that we should be liable for that, if, you know what I mean? So, do you think a release is something that-
Or hold harmless?
Typically, in this instance, what I would do, um, is I would go to the insurance agent and make sure, um, that any documentation is actually cleared through them. Um, because I do not want to have an issue with your general liability.
Right.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
No. We can't, we can't.
We can't.
Not a dial.
Yeah, we can't, it's not really a, you know, we close, we-
No.
Well, you know what we'll do, you know what we could do, with the, the best thing to do here is, I, I just wanted to get a little bit of this out here, but would be to go to the town manager and, and whatever concerns or suggestions or whatever, you know, Greta, the same, I mean, I, so I think we are working forward to, to fix the situation. Yeah, that's great.
She can't speak.
So, yeah.
Us, too.
Yeah, so, so we'll go ahead and if, if you would continue, Greta, your correspondence with the town manager, the town attorney, and certainly the town council, and ma'am, you, you as well, please, and then we'll go ahead and the council will obviously have been, um, explained the whole situation to us tonight, and we'll go ahead and monitor that. So we thank you, thank you all for coming, and thank, uh, thank you, Mark and, uh, Jennifer for explaining some things, all right? Okay, so, we are gonna move on with our meeting now, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda, and, uh, we've all got the consent agenda ahead of time, and we've reviewed it, and do we, if we have any questions, now would be the time. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, we'll make a motion to accept the five items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second. Second, thank you very much. Is there any further, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved? Okay. So, now we have a couple of, uh, public hearings, uh, so, now, okay, we're gonna do these together, right? Same notice, I guess?
Probably do them together, they would probably, they would notice.
Together, right? From what I saw, okay.
You have to go down?
Yeah, do we have to, do we, can we stay up here, do we have to go down?
Stay right up here.
Stay here now, this is a different one, 'cause this is not fi- I've read some of your financial, yeah, it's not a town meeting, right? Okay, so, we'll go ahead and call the public hearings to order at, um, seven forty-five, and the purpose of the public hearing pursuant, uh, to section thirteen eight dash forty-nine of Connecticut General Statutes, public hearings of the Town of Berl- Burlington Council will be held on Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty nineteen, in Town Council Chambers, Burlington Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut, at seven P.M. concerning the following. One, partial abandonment of Town Farm Lane slash Messorio Drive right away for the purpose of satisfying the regulatory requirements to properly operate and manage the transfer station's operations. Two, partial abandonment of Grove Hill right away for the purpose to incorporate additional property into Phase Two of Saint Paul's Development Plan. And this was dated, uh, Burlington, Connecticut, thirteenth, thirteenth day of May, twenty nineteen, published dates June thirteenth, twenty nineteen, by the town clerk. So this is a public hearing, we have these two items, this would be the time for, uh, public comments.
You want Mike to do any kind of presentation?
Uh, yeah, pro- yeah, we can do that before the public presents. Mike, just explain a little bit to us, I know we have the benefit of some other documentation, so before, briefly what they both mean, and then the public, if anyone wants to comment, they are welcome to.
I guess what I could do is show this, this way.
Yes, show the, yeah.
So, the, uh, what, I'll start, I'll start with that. This is the, uh, physical services complex on Town Farm Lane behind Stop &amp; Shop. Um, essentially, there used to be a road, or a new road that went straight through, and the whole intersection was reconfigured, which left this sort of, uh, triangular piece. It used to be the road, now the, the, uh, the complex is actually using it. It's sort of a bookkeeping thing, we want to actually make this part of this tax lot, and it gives us room for the transfer station area to actually satisfy the deep regulation. So, what we're proposing is, and it's excess right of way, it's, it's considered almost like part of the roadway, um, land area, but it really isn't needed, we have enough room. So we're gonna actually reconfigure the property line and intersection geometry to incorporate this land into this lot, and that helps out, I think, the, uh, the physical services complex in number of ways. So it's town land to town land, it's just moving the property line.
Okay.
Okay. So the second one is on Grove Hill, and, uh, these, uh, Saint Paul's Parish, among this lot and this lot, there, I, I heard rumors, there was some sort of, uh, boulevard complex or proposal which explains why the right of way for Grove Hill is ridic- it's not ridiculous, but it's very, very wide. So this is excess right of way, Saint Paul purchased these properties from the town, they are getting pinched, I think, inside their lots with setbacks, so they requested the town to abandon these rights of way, to incorporate those into their tax lots, and it's similar to the previous, uh, application, it's excess right of way, this land will be incorporated into that tax lot, their property line, which is shown in orange here, will actually go out to here, we have enough room for any drainage, for utilities, for the snow shelf, so we're, as far as the public works is concerned, we're fine with this, this shift, and I think it's been through the P and Z and through your commission, so it's, it's one of the final stage.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, so now we, that we have that explanation, any public comments on any of this? Now would be your time. Seeing no public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comments, and now we have town council comments. Any counselor comments? Seeing no, hearing no comments, we'll go ahead and close that, and we will now go ahead and close the public hearing at, uh, seven forty-eight. Go ahead and close that, and we will now move on to our agenda, and our first agenda item is?
Sure, um, regarding the approval of the partial abandonment of the Town Farm Lane Messorio Drive right away, and authorize the interim town manager to execute and staff to file with the town clerk such documents as they are necessary to effectuate the transaction.
Appreciate that, so we just heard, uh, obviously in the public hearing, explanation, I know we have our, uh, information here, the counselors have it, so if there's any questions or, uh, comments, if not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the partial abandonment of the Town Farm Lane Messorio Drive right of way, and authorize the interim town manager to execute and staff to file with the town clerk such documents as are necessary to effectuate the transaction.
Second. Thank you. Any, any further, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Number two.
Number two, um, this is, uh, regarding the, uh, partial abandonment of the Grove Hill right of way, and authorize the interim town manager to execute and staff to file with the town clerk such documents as they are necessary to effectuate the transaction.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and take a motion, and then we can-
Okay. Move to approve the partial abandonment of the Grove Hill right away, and authorize the interim town manager to execute, staff to file with the town clerk such documents as are necessary to effectuate the transaction.
Second. Thank you. Any, uh, comments from the council, questions? Hearing none, uh, have motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Number three.
Um, this is regarding the waiving of the bidding procedure and award of the contract for G.I., G.I.S. annual maintenance to New England Geo Systems of Middletown, Connecticut, for the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, that is, as it's in the best interest of the town. Um, we have, uh, Mike O'Hearn here to, uh, speak on this topic. Hello again, Mike.
Hi. Um, yeah, New England Geo has been, um, they basically set up the public side of the, of the web, the G.I.S. website, and they've been hosting that public side as well as an internal, um, G.I.S. website that the staff uses, town staff, um, and they also handle, um, five departments' requests, including engineering, where they just printed some maps for us, they're putting the sanitary and the water lines in our G.I.S. for the public and also for town staff to use. So they have essentially kept, I think they've reduced their prices over, over time. Their breakdown of their fees is, excuse me, um, six thousand for the hosting of both the public and the internal websites, four thousand for our department engineering and public works, and then four thousand for economic development and planning and zoning. Um, the assessor, which, uh, actually includes all of the parcel map updates that are reflected on the town website, and also all of the attributes, which is the parcel information that's also reflected in vision appraisal, that is seven thousand dollars. That's actually a lot of work. And also for water control, they do some maps, and they do these map books that, um, Ray and the staff use for water and sewer, for lines, and then general services is six thousand dollars. That actually is for miscellaneous categories, for other departments, including the police department, to use if they need to. So, this has been stable, and it's, um, we'd like to continue that, that hosting and those services.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for Mike, he's here? Hearing none, so we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion.
Okay, I move to waive the bidding procedure and award a contract for G.I.S. annual maintenance to New England Geo System of Middletown, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Second, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number four.
Um, this is, uh, a discussion concern, concerning stump removal from Worthington Ridge, um, within the historic district, um, this is-
Mike, again, Mike, lucky you, Mike.
It's the last meeting, and now Mike is here to report.
I'll be the human easel.
Yeah, that's good.
Glad everyone can see it. At the last meeting, you asked us, after some resident comments, um, to do an inventory of the stumps on Worthington Ridge in the historic area, and also to come up to the costs for dealing with those. So we've counted, so far, thirty-four. Every time we go out, we find another couple, but this shows thirty. A lot of them are, are actually the northern portion, portion of Worthington Ridge on the east side of the road, um, but they're all spread out, and they're, they range between, most of them are three to four foot diameter, that's where they were cut. So these are, these were big trees, um, which Eversource, and I think what gets lost in this is these trees were dead or in decline, so Eversource taking them down actually saved the town a lot of money and on potential liability issues. So, everyone's complaining about the stumps, but the trees were actually hazard that were taken down. But getting back to the situation, so these are the stumps, we got some cost proposals in rough numbers with traffic control, about five hundred dollars each, times thirty-four is about, if you wanted to do it all in one shot, it's seventeen thousand dollars, or we could phase it over time if, um, the town council would like to, to give us some money. Um, and it's, it would be, it would, um, involve grinding them down below grade, remove the grindings, top soil and seed, so it basically looks like a lawn or it's restored, restored to the existing grade level. So that's the inventory and the cost, uh, and it's for discussion.
Okay, thanks for that information, appreciate that. Um, we didn't have all that information last time, hence we didn't do anything with it. So, just, I'll just start, there's a couple things- There's a couple things with, we're late in the budget year, from what I understand, and I understand that with money out of contingency fund, which were, I guess this would come from if we have some extra money there, that these are services, so it's difficult to carry that money over into the new budget year, if I'm correct in that?
Can't.
You can't. So this would all have to be done before June, July first, which is probably impossible, I would imagine, to get all that done, or very difficult.
Challenge.
A challenge, let's put it that way. So that's one challenge. The second challenge, and again, I've had people come to me, I have my own questions about it, and then please, everybody, you know, we need to make it, it's really gonna come down to a policy discussion. So we know Worthington Ridge, we know it's a great place, we know it's our historic street. So now we, let's say we decide to go ahead and do this, which would probably have to be in the new fiscal year based upon the time we have left, which is fine, we can take money out of, you know, where there's money in a contingency fund for the new year, so that's fine, we can get the funding. But we do for Worthington Ridge, there's stumps, I think, on Farmington Avenue. I know there was, there's been stumps on my street that, that were on the town right-of-way that homeowners paid for. So we're, you know, where do we stop? Do we just do it here? I know people have, you know, it's already out there in the community, some people have already commented that, well, what about my stumps on my street that are on the town easement? If, I actually assume all these are on town property?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, now it becomes a policy decision, and how do we implement that? So we have thirty-four stumps, that's seventeen thousand dollars for one street, don't know how much that would cost down the road. So that's one question for the council to debate and think about. The second question would be, Mike, I've been told that they're, you know, a piece of equipment, I guess we don't, we don't, so you would contract this out, obviously?
Well, that's one approach, yeah.
It's one approach.
That was the simplest approach, just get someone to come and do it, but then your recurring, you know, requests would have to be handled in, in that way or another way.
So another, you know, just a thought for all of us to talk about as we all speak, if the town, do we have stump grinding equipment or no?
No, we usually rent it. If we, like the Parks and Rec, Parks and Grounds will, if, for the school properties, they may do that if, you know, it's near a playground or something, was a trip hazard. So they will rent that, but we don't have any.
If we, and I don't know how much it costs, so I mean, my suggestion would be we find out maybe if the town bought the equipment, and perhaps, because there are stumps everywhere in town, on people's properties, on different, you know, main roads that look bad and could be a potential hazard, no question, that maybe we buy the equipment and we just, you know, I know you don't, I know you don't have enough to do in public works, but maybe we schedule it like, much like we schedule roads, or taking trees down, or whatever we do, every year we do some stumps. I don't know, that's just a thought.
Best time would probably be late fall, after the roadwork is done.
Yeah, you got time.
By now, it's, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, up to you to pick the time, but I, I mean, I just, it's a kind of a policy decision. And what has the town done in the past? I don't know. Have we ground all these stumps down in the past? Apparently not, because I think a lot of those stumps on Worthington Ridge aren't just from Eversource recently. They're, they've been there.
Yeah.
And I know there's many around town that have been there for years. I don't, and I don't know if it's good or bad, I'm just trying to, we have to...
Eventually rot.
Yeah, they rot, and they go, you know, and they look ugly, and people could fall and all that, all those type of things, but it's a policy decision, and, you know, how much funding do we want to spend, and how do we want to do it?
Right, and I worked...
Do we want to do it? I don't know.
I worked in Wilton for ten years, and the public works director there had an adamant no stump removal unless it was a safety issue, or there was some other, it was part of a project sidewalks or something like that, because once you open that door, we're gonna be getting calls. You know, that's the reality of the situation.
I'm afraid of, yeah.
And if everyone's a taxpayer, they'll say, well, you did Worthington Ridge, you did thirty, why can't you do two in front of my house? So it's gonna be recurring if we do start down this road. And if it is, it is. We'll phase it, and we'll just make a list, and, you know, if we buy the equipment, we'll just take the requests, late fall, or whenever we can squeeze a crew, we'll, we'll do them, if that's the decision.
Yeah. Are any of these a hazard, or are they just not aesthetically?
I think it's aesthetic, but there's, I guess there's so many, especially if you look on the, the north half of Worthington Ridge on the east side, if you're driving down there, and they're, you know, they're, they're pretty big, you know, three to four-foot diameter.
Yeah, my concern...
As far as I understand, it's aesthetic.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is the obvious, that it is a historical district, and we kind of want it to be aesthetically pleasing.
Right.
You know, especially if we're gonna move forward with the renovation of the meeting house, and eventually we have tourist attraction, you know, I mean, we want it to be, A, safe, and B, you know, nice looking. This is a beautiful area of our town, so, you know, I think that needs to be considered.
I agree with you, Joanne. I do think we need to consider that. Another question, even though it's on the town right-of-way, can a property owner pay to have it done themselves?
Yes, but they would have to come to us, we'd want an insurance certificate, and we would, I even thought about offering an expedited permit, you know, sort of a process, so if people wanted to do it in advance of any decision, we could work that out on a permit basis, so that the town's protected and they're permitted.
Can these homeowners, if, before these became stumps and were trees, did they have cut them down?
They could have come to us and asked for it, yeah, and, and actually, in Wilton, that was done where I used to work, as long as the contractor was insured and, you know, sort of licensed to do that work.
They could have done that?
Yeah.
And then what if it were to...
That would be at the, with the town's approval, not just go out and do it.
And what would happen if one of these trees were to fall either over the roadway or onto their own property? How would those two circumstances be?
As far as a town tree?
Yeah, so these trees that were once, that were once, well, these stumps that were once trees?
Could have let Jennifer maybe, do you want to respond?
It would be the town's responsibility. Um, there was a key, and Mike is aware, not that he...
I have to speak to the microphone, sorry. It would be the town's responsibility, the tree warden is responsible for the tree curtain. So it would definitely be the town's.
Either, either which way, if it fell on the road or on the property?
Either way.
And then would the stump be included as part of that responsibility?
Well, I mean, the stump issue, it really is, I think, if you're not gonna decide to do it for aesthetic reasons, I mean, there should, there should be some investigation about whether or not any of the stumps do pose a hazard to motorists and to pedestrians. That's something that should be checked. I assume that you receive from Eversource their vegetation management plan? You receive anything?
We probably, we probably have it, it's probably in the files, I haven't gone through it.
As, as they do vegetation management from year to year, do they submit something?
Yes, no, they do, they, they show us where they're doing the hardening, you know, of their, especially overhead lines. They will actually send a map showing where they're working. And we actually in contact with their arborists on probably a weekly basis about trees.
It is a good idea, as they do take trees down, to have the stump checked and to make sure that it doesn't, again, pose a hazard to pedestrians, depending on the area, to pedestrians or to motorists, because I know of circumstances where towns have been sued because stumps have been that close to the street, that it has actually caused an accident. So you, you should be checking that.
Would, would, do you think, Mike, well, knowing Eversource, I don't, would they come back and if, let's say, some were deemed hazardous, would they, have you ever known of Eversource to come back and grind down stumps?
Well, they actually will come back if they leave high stumps, they'll come back and trim them, because usually it's like a resident who's complaining. I have not personally dealt with them on a stump removal in either town, so.
And, and so...
I don't believe that Eversource or U.I. removes any stumps.
No, I, I, well, I just thought I'd ask, I, I'm with you on that, but I, you know, I want to keep, keep it open for Eversource, our biggest taxpayer in town, you know, we, we like them and we want to keep them here, but it's all right to ask the question. But, so it's a decision we have to make as a town. I mean, to me, you know, it makes sense probably to buy our own equipment, and, you know, as you said, if it's all around town, there's certainly hazardous ones, they gotta go, right? And we're gonna keep hiring contractors, or we're gonna...
It's a piece of equipment like that costs.
That's what we need, that's my next question was, what?
Yeah, I looked into it a little bit. If you go with the, the round number's around ten thousand dollars. I saw some, they're like, like rototillers, some of them are rototillers like on steroids. They're just large, they are self-prop, you don't want to self-propel something, probably twenty horsepower or bigger, because these are big stumps. So that thing would be at least eighty-five hundred dollars, and then you throw in the extra blades and teeth and all that stuff, you're probably talking ten. There's also another approach, which is you put it on the front of a Bobcat or a Skidsteer, so it can be attachment on top, and that's around ten, so both around ten thousand dollars. And I would defer to Parks and Grounds and also Jim Simons on what the best piece of equipment would be for where, you know, what, what the stumps that we have to deal with is.
And what's the cost to rent?
Renting, I don't have it off, it's a lot, obviously a lot cheaper, but over time you're gonna pay more.
I can do this on that.
If you're doing it, you know, for several weeks every year. So I'm not averse to getting a new piece of equipment if, if it's the right piece of equipment and we can get funded, so.
Yeah, I have another question. Who's the tree warden now?
Steve Karp, the highway super.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
So can we, based upon your information, you've looked into the equipment, and maybe we want Mr. Simons and a couple other people to weigh in on this, and...
Yes, absolutely, before, yeah.
I mean, it's, we're not gonna get this done by the end of the fiscal year, that's just, sounds like it's quite an uphill battle to do that, and we can't carry the money over because it's services rendered, it's not capital equipment. So I would defer to, if you can come back to our next meeting with equipment prices, just so we know what it, what it costs, and, and not to say that we're, we're not gonna do stumps, whether it's Worthington Ridge or wherever, maybe we just pay for them, but we can always take it out of next year's contingency amount, even at the beginning of the fiscal year, we don't have to wait till the end of the fiscal year, and, and then we have many months to get it accomplished, or, or at least enough time for public works to get the contractor in to do it. I think we're up against the end of the budget year for non-capital expenditure.
We're not allowed right now to pull any new PO, so Kevin would do, you know, somersaults or whatever.
To spend seventeen thousand dollars would require three, you'd have...
Well, if you go according to, yes.
And then bring it to the town council.
Bids, right, we have to get bids, right?
Yeah.
So we got, what, about a week left, couple of week and a half? Yeah.
Yeah.
So that seems like a bit of a, a reach. So if you, you know, whatever you all think, I mean, we can, this is a discussion, we can still continue the discussion, and with some more information, and, and decide which, which, what, you know, obviously, the overall policy is, if it's a dangerous stump, I, I mean, I, I would think the town should do it, but do we just want it aesthetically? It's gonna run into quite a bit of money around town, and I think most homeowners in Burlington, and myself included, have paid for our own stump removal that had been, I didn't realize they even needed to ask the town if it was, I mean, it's on the easement, but it's on the other side of the sidewalk, you know, when the big storm hit, there were stumps all over our streets.
You didn't know at the time?
I didn't know, we didn't know, and we paid for a lot of stump removal, so it'd be nice if the town would have paid for all those too, but that's a question we have to decide as a council, if, I would suggest we get a little bit more information, and then try and make that decision, whether it's, we do it, and how do we do it then? Contractors, equipment that we buy. Yeah, and maybe just an assessment of, and I know it's impossible because of all the roads, but how many stumps there are, because if there's only thirty-four on Worthington Ridge and that's one street, I can't imagine how many...
Give you a ballpark.
Ballpark.
I'll talk to Steve, because he's, he's been taking trees down, well...
I'd be curious.
Accelerating pace.
Yeah, I mean, the more information we have to make the decision, the better, right?
We'll give that a shot.
I appreciate that, Mike. An assessment of how many stumps you could do per day, you know, something like that, thank you. Okay, thanks, great discussion, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
I guess you got some more homework to do? You knew you wouldn't get off that easy, right?
Nope.
Okay, so number five.
Number five, authorizing the interim town manager to issue a notice of intent to award RFP two thousand and nineteen B.R. oh-one to Murphy Road Recycling LLC on behalf of the Town of Burlington. We have Mike here to speak on this again.
Yeah, this is sort of, sort of unfortunate. We used to get paid for recyclables, nine dollars a ton, now we're gonna get charged eighty dollars a ton to get rid of them, so...
Oh, my goodness.
Because China has stopped taking basically, you know, our country's recyclables.
Read that, yeah?
Yeah, so there was a conference call slash meeting last Thursday by Bristol Recovery, and they basically put the recycling contract out for bid, they got one bidder, which was Murphy Roads Recycling, which has been doing it since two thousand, I think fifteen or fourteen. They've been negotiating with Murphy Road, they have a couple of contract issues to iron out, but essentially the base processing fee is eighty dollars a ton, and that'll be adjusted based on commodity rates, and I have a feeling they'll be going up and not down, but at least eighty bucks a ton right now for us to get rid of recyclables. Now, we knew this was coming, so some of that is built into the line item in the budget, but we have to now contract, the, the existing contract is over June thirtieth, so, and that includes Burlington and thirteen other communities, so that are part of the Bristol Recovery group. So Murphy Roads will allow us to continue after June thirtieth if we issue a notice of intent to award the contract, which is essentially what Bristol Recovery is gonna do and the thirteen other communities. So we're all in the same boat, no one is really happy about the situation, but it's, and other communities outside of our group are also paying seventy, eighty dollars a ton, so, so we're trying, yes.
What, what does it cost for trash per ton?
Sixty-five dollars, about sixty-five, fifty a ton? Yeah, so it's more expensive than trash.
So why are we doing it?
Because where's the recyclers, where are they gonna go?
Trash.
Well, I know what you mean, why don't we throw all that? I think there's a mandate for recycling, unfortunately, the state has, and Jennifer might know more about that than I do.
Absolutely.
Is that what's, that, see that happening, that people throw their trash?
And it is everywhere. Everybody's gonna be paying more.
Right.
I've been going to all the SCROG meetings that they've been having about the recycling.
Right. Mandated, you have to have recycling?
You have to.
Not that I, I don't know, I'm kind of environmentally sound, I don't want to get rid of it, but it just seems perverse to me, more money now. No, China doesn't want our junk anymore, so I guess we're not...
What precipitated this increase in, we're paying for it, when you said get paid for it?
Because they were selling it to China for a profit, and they were giving us nine dollars back because they were making money. Now the China pipeline has been shut down, and everyone is in the same boat, like, basically it's the entire country.
Nationwide?
Yeah, nationwide.
The Argyle Wall Street Journal about it, they just showed, all these recycling plants are just, stuff's piling up, they don't know what to even do with it. What are they gonna do with it now?
It's just, it, it boggles the mind, but it's unfortunately the situation we're in.
So what will they do with, so now we can't sell it to China, so we're paying them to get rid of it, what are they gonna, what are they gonna do with it?
I actually don't know what, well, they're gonna sell what they can, the mixed paper, the cardboard, the stuff that's not contaminated. I have a feeling some of the plastics can actually be burned, maybe they can go to Covanta or get, you know, I, I don't know what they do for the rest of it, they might have to landfill, I actually don't know what they do.
Back to landfill, so can, we just got away from that, huh?
So...
Huh.
It's terrifying. No, it really is.
Would it be cheaper to go out for bid, or...[1614.88]
Well, they, Bristol Recovery did go out to bid, yeah.
Oh, they did the bid for the group?
Right, and they started in March, they got, I think, the one bid in April, then they were going back and forth with Murphy, Murphy is, just, that's their, that's their economic model, so they're not willing to budge on the cost.
Or to make money off something that can't make money off.
Well, they're, however they're doing it, they're requiring eighty dollars a ton for us to deliver to their facility.
Any ballpark on the number of tons we're...
Our ton, two thousand tons a year, yeah, roughly.
If we do the math.
We were getting paid.
Hundred sixty thousand?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, it's private, it's on Christian, Christian Lane, it's in town, actually, with their tax pay, or at least it's in that.
About a hundred sixty thousand a year?
Already old automated recycling?
Which were they were paying us before. I think it is, yeah, yeah.
Good deal.
They're private, so it's not a property?
Yes, yes, they're not public or quasi-public, they're private.
I'm going to read this, huh?
What a deal.
Thank you.
All right, so, all right, so any other, um, answer questions? Here, so we go ahead and take a motion on this?
Move to authorize the interim town manager, Mark, Mary Kozakowski, sorry, to issue a notice of intent to award RFP number two thousand nineteen BR oh-one to Murphy Road Recycling LLC on behalf of the town of Berlin.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Speaking of recycling, whatever happened to the pink, the pink bag?
Starts on the seventeenth, I believe.
Is it starting? Oh, I missed it, okay.
It was in the Citizen this past...
Oh, oh, good, okay.
Bags were distributed.
Yeah, they were, came through the mail.
Oh, good.
You just have to put them out on the day you recycle.
Oh, right, okay, so I wonder what they're doing, what's their problem now?
Yeah, I have mine, I just, I'm excited to use it, to be honest with you.
I didn't get any bags, did they send them to us?
Yeah, I don't have one.
The pink bag, I didn't get them. Where's the pink bags?
My bag.
Huh? No? I was checking the pink bags.
I just got them here.
You got, you got them in the mail?
Check the mailing list, I'll check out, I'll see, I thought they got the mailing list from the assessor's office, so we'll, we'll...
Oh, no, I didn't, I never got them.
And it's been in the Citizen twice now.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah, me too.
All right, I'll let them know and what we'll probably do is have some extras at the Public Works, the engineering department.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get a couple of cases for people who want to use that service.
And for the audience, we could put in, it was, what goes in the pink bag?
Clothing, fabric, um, clothes, shoes.
Clothing, fabric, shoes, uh...
Even singular shoes?
Singular shoes, anything, so that'll help take some trash out of the usual stream, right, that we pay for, so, okay.
We don't pay anything for it.
No, we get twenty dollars.
Now, probably, the guy can't get rid of it, he probably can't get rid of it now, that'll probably change, but I guess we'll try. Okay, thanks, thanks, Mike. Okay, number six?
This is regarding the approval to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the police pension account into the police vehicles and equipment account, as these additional funds are needed to cover the increased costs associated with the purchase of two police vehicles. We have Chief Klett here to speak on this item.
Chief?
Sure.
Six grand more car, huh? Are they ripping us off now for that too?
Well, we, I guess, well, we do the budget in November.
Yeah.
And now it's June and the price came in at, it's actually fifty-three hundred dollars a car more we anticipated. Based on that, we would only leave us with about sixty-two hundred dollars to outfit those cars, based on the seventy-three thousand that was given to us in the budget. One of these cars is a Crown Victoria too, which means it's going to have all new equipment, which I can't even accurately say, I mean, it could be eighteen thousand just for that one car. So, there was some money identified, we had an employee leave before they were vested in the pension, so this money is what they left, so the motion would be to take that money, move it over to the vehicle account for equipment, so we would have enough money to do these cars. Might have a little bit left, but I think we'll, we'll have that, it'll be there if we need it next year and if we don't use it, so.
I guess we can thank the employee for leaving early? It's kind of...
Won't comment on that, but he's, you know, he got a better job, so he...
Yeah, all right, well, thirty grand on the table, I hope he got a good job, yeah, that's great. Okay, everything goes up as we know.
Yep.
So, we'll take a motion on this.
Okay, move to approve the transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the police pension account into the police vehicles and equipment account, as these additional funds are needed to cover the increased costs associated with the purchase of two police vehicles.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I wonder if we can move number eight before seven, just so...
Got the chief's here.
Yeah, instead of making him sit down and come on back up again.
Yeah, we go ahead and...
So moved.
So moved, second, all right, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're good. So, number eight, you're up here anyway, chief.
That's not my motion, so I don't, that's not my agenda.
No, I know, so...
I'd be happy to speak to it.
Yeah, so, what hap, I mean, what happened, you know, I don't know, it's for the council to think about, I don't know what everybody wants to do, I think where, what happened where this eighty thousand would come from would be, so, in the budget negotiations, we decided to, and we had just sent that to the finance board, which they didn't, they didn't, they didn't vote on doing it, but it's okay because this was a hundred thousand, which was to go to the McGee classroom to be outfitted for special needs children that were moving up from the elementary school. So, in the, in the whole budget process, Mr. Benigni and the Board of Ed had some, they have some year-end money that the Board of Finance, in the one percent account, I believe, is going to vote in a special meeting before the end of the year to let them spend that money, so that hundred thousand that we were going to give the Board of Ed to begin that outfitting of the classroom, to make sure it was done by the fall, we don't need to do that and they're, and the Board of Ed's okay with that and so is Mr. Benigni. So, we have, this, there's an extra now, I don't want to say extra, there is some a hundred thousand dollars that is there in the contingency fund that we were going to transfer to the Board of Ed, so with that, you know, we, you know, this came up with additional police cars, we, I know, gave you two in the budget and I know there was, I think, five requested, maybe?
Six.
Six, okay. So, here's where the money would be, again, this is the end-of-year contingency fund that would go into the fund balance or be used for something else or be used for two more marked units or whatever used for them. So, up for the council to discuss, talk about, move?
Is that enough, based on what you're seeing with the other two, eighty thousand?
So, we have, I have two cars that need to go, two years ago, we had, we had zero cars, last year, we got two, they were both, had to replace the K nine units, which are not frontline patrol cars. Some of the cars out there, as you see, I've heard people say we have a lot of cars, well, three of those cars are old, actually, more than that, are older cars that we kept, so we would have a car for the SRO, so those cars all have high miles, they don't get a lot of miles put on them, so we use them for that, for the SROs. There's a car assigned to the traffic officer because it's got all the specialized investigation equipment, there's a staff vehicle, which has no cage in it, so you see the cars, there's really eight of them that are frontline cars and none of those have been replaced in the last three years, so we've got two now. One of the supervisor vehicles has about eighty-five thousand miles on it right now, we're looking at a six-month lead time on these, so that won't be well over ninety, ninety-five thousand by the time that goes off the road. And I know that Mr. Simons needs, he's looking for these vehicles to replace other vehicles that are in the fleet as well, so it's not the end of their life, it's just the end of their use in the police department. To answer your question, eighty thousand, I think is fair, I think we can do that, I think if we have enough to outfit those, and I also think that whatever little we might have left over from the thirty thousand would go toward that and I think it's adequate to meet the needs.
Great, thank you.
Um... So, I understand, there's two cars already in next year's budget.
Correct.
Correct. And this would be two additional cars, we could get four cars.
Correct.
And there's about twelve cars in the parking lot that get used sometimes.
No, there are, there are eight that go out on a route, and you get, there's times where we have no cars out there because we've got road jobs that we're charging twenty dollars an hour for the cruiser to be on.
Are there, my, I guess my question is, are there any of those cars we could upgrade with the proper equipment and put them into the circulation?
Those are all, the cars that are sitting there are, were holdover cars, so those would have been taken out of the fleet.
Already older cars.
Right, and what we did is we left the lights in them and put equipment in the other cars, so those cars are used for, like I said, the SRO, it sits in the school all day. Traffic, the traffic, that was a car that we, when we, that car was a replacement for the van that the ACO needed, if you remember that, a few years ago, they needed a van, so we gave them the van and they got us, we replaced that vehicle. The staff vehicle is another vehicle, that's the first Taurus we ever got and that's probably eight or nine years old and that's been rotated off, so we replaced those and that's where we are now, that's why it looks like there's a lot of cars there.
So, we need about eight cars active and we've already approved financing for four new ones.
Yeah, no.
But we didn't replace them for three years.
Right, so then you're going to get four new ones this year.
Right.
You know, change half the fleet out, you need, you need to change six of those cars this year, that's my question.
No, no, I, well, I can get, I have two unmarked cars that we didn't, one of them was in the budget this year, one was last year, one of those is an eleven-year-old Crown Victoria, one of them's another that has eighty, and I've, I've got the, Deputy Chief's car has eighty-five thousand miles on it right now. And so, those would have been, and again, they go back into the town's circulation, Jimmy Simons would use those for the nurses or for the town manager's car or whatever, so they don't get, it's just the end of the use of the PD, not the town.
How, what's the lifespan mileage-wise or hours-wise, at what point do you guys retire the vehicles?
Well, I rely on Mr. Simons, because he's in charge of the fleet, I know he looked at one car out there, it had seventy-three thousand miles on the odometer and it had two-hundred-and-eighty thousand miles on the engine, because they run all the time, they're idling constantly. So, I mean, we've been taking them out at eighty to eighty-five thousand and then the town uses them for other purposes until they reach whatever, one-fifty or they break down, I mean, we did have one of the, one of the K nine cars, actually, the engine seized on it, which, right before we were replacing it, the other car was on order when the engine seized, which is unusual, they don't, Jimmy just takes pretty good care of those vehicles, but they were actually testing it when it locked up on them.
I wish we could give you all six, I'm certainly in, in, in favor of giving you a couple more.
And me as well, I wish we could have given you the six too and so I definitely am thrilled to see you get two more.
Chief, the two you said now, that are already budgeted, those are going, I missed it when you said it, I apologize, those are going to replace what?
R nine, which is a Taurus, no, that's a SUV, they're both Patrol, all these will be Patrol.
Also, they're going for frontline Patrol?
They're all going for Patrol, I mean, I had thought about the, one of the unmarks, because one of them's got eighty, ninety thousand and it's the DC's car and he drives, he puts a lot of miles on that car, but they'll all be Patrol cars.
And are they, do these cars run twenty-four-seven or just one shift and then they're turned off or two shifts?
They, it depends on the schedule, they could run twenty-four-seven or they could run, they might go a day or two with nobody in it or a day and then run two shifts.
Kind of depends on the cycle.
Depends on the schedule, exactly.
And you have, I mean, your minimum shift is three plus a sergeant, but you have more than that on a shift, something?
Yeah, we have seven, we could have as many as six and two sergeants on the shift at any one time. Then you have during the day, you've got, you know, we're taking prisoners to court, we actually swapped out one of those cars because the court officer didn't have a cage, so they needed a cage and so...
Yeah, all right. In the anticipation of expectation for the future, if you were to get four new cars this year, what do you anticipate needs in the outgoing years?
I'd have to, I mean, I can't, I mean, without having seen how the mileage goes for the year, what, you know, again, I rely on Mr. Simons for that, but it's going to depend on how, you know, we're going to need to do an unmarked next year for sure, because that DC's car is going to be well over a hundred thousand miles by then, so I'll get a look at that. The other supervisor vehicle will probably go another year, but I've got two other ones that are coming up on seventy thousand now, by next year, they'll be in the nineties for sure, so, I mean, I'd say three, I mean, I'm just spitballing it right now without having the mileage and the hours and that kind of thing.
Okay, and, and, you know, so, just so people understand, so this is, this year's budget, obviously, this is money that is, people have been taxed on already, it's this year's budget, you know, current budget we're in, which expires the end of the month, and it's some money that, there's always money that's in, that's in different accounts that we don't spend, that, you know, there's some money in this contingency account and at the end of the year, we move it around and if there's equipment that we need to buy, sometimes it's good to go ahead and buy it and that way, we, you know, maybe reduce some needs for next year, so, anyway, that's where this money comes from, so. So, we'll go ahead and, any other questions? Then we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Move to approve the transfer of eighty thousand dollars from the contingency account to the police vehicles account in the general fund.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief. Oh, so we've got to go back to seven, right?
Yeah.
Seven?
Number seven, regarding the authorization of, authorizing the town manager, interim town manager, to apply for a supplemental Brownfield Assessment Grant, fifty thousand dollars for the Connecticut Sand and Stone Properties and to authorize interim town manager to enter into grant agreements and if a grant is offered, to enter into an agreement with Real Properties LLC with respect to environmental testing of this properties and the public availability of data for such testing, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council. Chris Edge asked me to speak a little bit about this one, so the town has received a hundred thousand dollar Brownfields Assessment Grant to evaluate the environmental conditions of the Connecticut Sand and Stone Corporation property at, I believe it's on three oh-three New Britain Road. The, the contract purchaser, um, Real Property Acquisition LLC, they obtain wetlands approval for filling on the property and part of that wetlands approval, they needed to enroll the property in a regulatory cleanup program with deep. The Brownfield remediation and revitalization program was determined to be the best option for the additional investigation, which is needed, which is particularly regarding groundwater and potential impacts on Willow Brook. The purchaser and the town have been working together to facilitate this effort, so the property can be sold and be available for future, future development. The town has a little over thirteen thousand dollars remaining in the existing Brownfields grant, additional funds are needed to complete this additional investigation. The town is eligible to apply for supplemental grant up to fifty percent of the original amount, so fifty thousand dollars this time around.
And, and, and I know this is all to get the property in usable order, so we might be able to get it back on the tax rolls at some point?
Correct.
Is what the goal is, so...
Yeah, last, last meeting, you authorized a forbearance agreement to allow them to keep the property as long as they're paying six thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, that's good, we're getting some money out of it, so, all right, we'll take a motion?
And this little map here is just kind of an idea of what it could be used for?
Yeah, that's a, that's a concept plan that was provided by the contract purchaser.
Great, take a motion?
Okay, move to authorize the interim town manager to apply for a supplemental Brownfields Assessment Grant of fifty thousand dollars for the Connecticut Sand and Stone Properties and to authorize the interim town manager to enter into grant agreements if offered, to enter into agreement with Real Property LLC with respect to environmental testing of said properties and the public availability of data from such testing, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number nine?
Number nine, regarding the transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the contingency account to the lightning detection account in the general fund.
John?
John Zuck, I think, can provide some comments on this.
How you doing, John? Good.
Good evening, everyone. This is not my agenda item, also, it came from the Board of Finance, but we originally had put in for, to replace the existing lightning detection, the existing lightning detection has become obsolete, no longer get parts for it. It was partially working last year and we were advised to take it completely offline if it was only partially working. And it's a detection system that detects lightning twenty miles away, sounds the horns, and when you don't get a lightning strike within thirty minutes, the horns will sound again, alerting golfers that they can go back out on the golf course and play. So, it's a pretty good safety feature, obviously.
Yeah, and I know this was in next year's budget, it was reduced, but we recognize that, obviously, we know it's a safety issue and again, that's, that would be part of the hundred thousand dollar money out of the contingency fund, eighty thousand now going to, if the Board of Finance approves, going to two new police vehicles and this would be the other twenty thousand of that hundred thousand that we had in there would go to this lightning detection system that we could obviously implement sooner, so...
You know, interesting that, I saw a show recently on storms and lightning, and it was kind of informational about why lightning strikes when it does or why it hits somebody, it could hit, you know, Jennifer and not me. You know, and they said lightning could kill in this show I saw on Discovery that, fourteen miles away.
Yeah, absolutely.
There couldn't be, you know, there may not be a storm or cloud around, but that storm could be hidden, but you could still get hurt.
And that's one of the reasons, excuse me, that's one of the reasons why they, they set a twenty-mile parameter, twenty miles away, if, if something's detected, they have a static electricity and a photocell that detects lightning within twenty miles. And then sirens go off, so...
Great. All right, so anyway, that's, that's our, that's the deal with that, so, and obviously, the police vehicles, this, they go to the Board of Finance now for approval, it's up to them to approve these transfers, but anyway, so, take a motion on this?
Move to approve the transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the contingency to the lightning detection account in the general fund.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
And number ten, so, right, what do we, so we, so I asked, so we've been talking about the tax relief programs for our residents in our ordinance committee, we've reviewed many towns, we reviewed what Berlin has and we talked about different plans to help some people with some tax relief, our seniors in particular, that, excuse me, maybe on fixed income, right? So, we found, you guys obviously have, right, we found this, well, I'm glad, we found some, there are some programs on the town website and I think I asked Kate to, if we can move them up somewhere, I think they're sometimes a little bit difficult to find, right, Mark, so...
Yeah, we can find opportunities to better advertise.
Yeah, and so the, so, in, you know, to bring, you know, the ordinance committee, we've talked about this, so to bring the council up to date, we, the last, I think, we decided was to do some type of tax credit program, but then, in the last ordinance committee meeting, we focused on the programs that the town already has and for some reason, this, this first one, the Connecticut State Elderly and Totally Disabled Homeowner Tax Credit, we, at some earlier discussions that, in the ordinance committee, we weren't aware of, that we have it, it was, it's a state program that the state, I believe, what, stopped funding a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Right?
That is true.
The town is funding.
Circuit breaker program.
Circuit breaker, that's...
But the town continued to fund.
Continued to fund it?
As did most towns.
Okay.
There's only one town that didn't.
Really? Oh, that's terrible, so, well, it's not us, so that's good. And we see we have a hundred and eighty-six people taking advantage of it, so that's great. And this is much like, this is just for the council to discuss and we, you know, we don't have to finalize it tonight, but obviously, these are in place already, so this is a tax credit and it's a sliding scale and that's what we were talking about, based upon certain income levels, married, single, and it's, there's different exemption amounts from a hundred and fifty to twelve fifty. married, single, and, and it's, there's different exemption amounts from a hundred and fifty to twelve fifty. So, I'll ask you, counselor, you know, this is what we were talking about, right? I mean, does this fit the bill for what, you know, I know, you brought a lot of plans to us from other towns, and it got to be quite confusing because there's so many different plans out there.
Well, I think one of the things that we talked about in the ordinance committee meeting was whether or not you wanted to do a freeze program separate, apart from your deferral program. You have a current deferral program that nobody is availing themselves of. And that could be an education issue. You know, it's important, one of, you know, one of the things you could do is, you know, annually, do some sort of mailing, some towns, my own town does that. You know, they include it in an annual report, the various tax relief programs that are available. So, any type of education is a, is a good path.
Yeah, so.
I just talked to the financial director about this.
Yeah.
And there is, so there is movement within this that they wanted to, not only are we going to highlight on the website, but also that he's going to have somebody within the staff create like these little programs. And we can hand them out at the library.
Oh, great.
Senior center, and at town hall. So, this is in the process of being done. And then, once we get those programs together, we can simulate them to different.
That's great, because I, I, it's great that, so some, obviously, people know about it. And, and the second one, that our deferral program, people haven't taken advantage of it. I know that, because I think that one puts a lien on their property. And then we had, right, two others, the veterans benefit, right? And a couple veterans exemption ones. And handicap too, right? So, we have all these here, just, just for all you guys to read and digest. And if, you know, if we need to do a different plan, then we can still, we, I don't think we ever closed it out on the ordinance committee, but these sort of came to light. So, what do you all think? I mean, I don't, I mean, it seems like this tax credit one is pretty good, but.
Yeah, it's excellent.
Excellent.
Yeah. So, I don't know if we need to go further. Think we need to do further, I mean, there's.
I think the educational component, like you said, is probably the most important because most people probably don't even know it exists.
I didn't know, and I got my parents an application. My dad's a veteran, and he qualified, so, you know.
There's a bunch here, too.
I mean, I'm, I'm in council, I didn't know.
Cars, too, I think it's great, even for cars.
Yes, right, no, I know, there's some great stuff that, that's why we, we need to educate ourselves and, and the public more, obviously, because we.
Maybe as part of the website.
Yeah.
We have a link to the different things.
Yes.
Especially the veterans one.
That's what you're working on, right, Kate, to highlight them more?
I wanted you guys to have a discussion tonight about it.
Yep.
And then, like I said, the financial director and I will work on it. Kel Faro, he'll be assessing office, making these together because he often monitors all the programs. So, but we are definitely invested in, in this for it.
Yeah.
All right, and then also, during those programs, we can hand out in the library, the senior center.
You know, like I noticed, for instance, that the application I got from my parents, you had to access it through the, the veterans, the portion of the veterans, you know, area on the website. I'm thinking maybe if we can just get them all localized in one area, you know, or is that?
You know how you see the spotlight on the website right now? So, whenever you see something, I think is cute, like a flag or a referendum or something, that comes from my office.
Got it.
The words on the highlight it, so it, it just doesn't say the town of Berlin, but it will say, you know, tax relief or something like that.
Great, great.
People see it. And we have this discussion sometimes, but the, the seniors, which I guess I'm rapidly becoming one.
Aren't we all?
We all are, and we hope we do, because that means we're still around, but yeah, right. Now, that's right.
Ain't that good?
Excuse me. Our seniors do look at the website, they access it and everything like that. But then also, to make sure we get it into the libraries and the senior centers and things along those lines, it is important.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we know who our target audience is? Could we, could we send something to them in a tax bill?
You know, that has, I, Jennifer talked about that.
We did, we did, we did look at the, the numbers and who, you know, to assess. At one point, I think we talked about this in the committee.
Right.
Is Jack had asked, you know, how many people would qualify for the deferral program? What would the cost be? So, you do know who your, your target is on the programs, based upon age.
It seems like natural, they're getting a bill from us, we might give them some relief in the same envelope, you know.
They used to put a.
Programs, I believe, in October of the previous year, so it, it's.
Too late for this year?
Right.
But, but, but they can tell them for next year.
Well, I did something, I know years ago, we tried to do something with dog licenses and everything. You can definitely look at it, I don't know if the tax bills can have something like that. That we would have to pass, pass.
All right.
Didn't we used to put? We used to put V, they used to put V and A, like donate to the V and A in the tax bills.
But see, they're now outsourced, so I'm not sure how it works.
Okay. I think a link on our website would be great, and brochures.
Yeah, and the brochures, when those are done.
Yeah.
Because these are state, they're, they're also state, they've been going on for years. So, once they kind of do a, a pretty brochure, we can get it out and make sure that we use it for life.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
That's great, Kate, we appreciate you getting that out there and working with the tax assessor, tax collector. So, just, so to take back to the, just the ordinance committee, just to kind of close it with this issue. So, we're going to get it, get it out there, educate the, the public to it, educate our seniors to it, and maybe see what happens. I know there's been some other talk of a tax freeze on all seniors in town. At, I, I don't, I'm not even sure what that means, but I don't know what we think about that. I mean, I, me, if you're going to freeze everybody's taxes over sixty-five or seventy, people in town, we, some people in town have the means to pay it, some do not. That's what these programs are for, if they have the means to pay it. I, I'm not sure that's what we're, we're after. I think we're after helping people that are on fixed incomes and don't have the means to pay for some of the tax increases. That will, will always be forthcoming, unfortunately, in our wonderful state of Connecticut. But what do you guys think? I mean, is that something that we, you know, we would look at, study more, you know, I don't know what you guys.
Maybe we should try. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, you go, Peter.
No, no, you go.
I mean, they're already available, there's income limits, and people can take advantage of them, get the brochure out, put it out, links on our website, why not do it?
Yeah, add to, right, I mean, add to it, people obviously don't know, what do you think, Peter?
And again, people with means are not going to qualify.
Yes, yeah, I, no, I agree. What do you think, Peter? What do you think?
No, that's what I was going to say, let's see what.
Let's get it out there, yeah.
The experience for the next few months and.
Yeah, get it out there, we want, we want it available to people that need it, and make sure they know about it. And that's our, you know, seniors that can't afford it, and our veterans, and our, and our disabled, so, yeah, all right. What do you guys think?
Fine with that, that's, that's a good idea. Get some information out there.
Good, all right, great, thank you, everybody, let's go down. So, now we're down to our appointments. The cemetery committee, I just bring it to your attention that we, we have an opening, and the cemetery commission seems to be kind of moving forward. They're, seem to be a little bit re-energized, so if you guys know of any candidates, just to bring it to your attention, that, that, that's an opening that we haven't filled, that, that's why that's there, we don't have anybody to fill it now. But if you can find somebody, that'd be great, bring them forward. So, we have two here to fill, Conservation Commission alternate. We'll go ahead and take a nomination.
Okay, I'll nominate for the Conservation Commission, Mary Catherine LaRose.
Okay, thank you very much for that nomination, any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations, and we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, moved, welcome to Conservation Commission. And the other one we had an application for, no one else applied, was the Mattabasset District. So, we'll take a nomination.
Okay, I will nominate Robert Argazi for Mattabasset District.
Thank you very much, any other nominations for that? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor, Mr. Argazi?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, some move?
Nay.
Nay, two nays, okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, town managers' report.
A few things I want to talk to you about. Last meeting, you asked to, for me to speak as town planner and zoning chief, head of zoning enforcement about sign enforcement.
Yes, yes.
There was issues last summer and fall, and what we want to do is not repeat that effort. So, in the past, zoning enforcement has, as a courtesy to the Connecticut DOT and Public Works, we've removed temporary signs that had been placed on the right of ways, and coordinated the return of those signs to the, to the, to the owners. Moving forward, zoning enforcement will not provide this courtesy of removing the signs. It is not the job of the zoning enforcement officer or the town planner to go out, pick, physically pick up signs and remove them from, from the property. Zoning, the zoning regulations do list portable signs as prohibited signs, any of which maybe, maybe, may possibly be a zoning violation. I do know that the state and federal governments have laws that protect political signs and other community organization signage. And any of those laws would supersede the local regulations. So, moving forward, sign enforcement will be handled like any other potential zoning violation. If a complaint is made, it'll be investigated. And if a violation seems to be occurring, the property owner will be notified. And sign investigation violation will be prioritized accordingly with all other zoning regulation, zoning violations in town. I hope that clarifies what we're going to be doing moving forward.
It clarifies when there's a complaint. But what I'd really like to see is a very simple format of what is allowed. So, people put up signs in a proper way so they don't have the complaint.
Yeah, we did, we did do that last year. We, we posted, we, Maureen produced a, like a flyer discussing signs and what, what's regulated and what's allowed, what's not.
Very understandable and very.
It was very understandable, it was posted at Planning and Zoning, it was posted on the town website, it was posted on the, the town's Facebook page.
I, I have a proposal, and I'm not sure if it requires some sort of language, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Some language change or something, but many times, kind of like when your car gets towed, you just walk out there and it's gone, and you're like, what the heck, someone stole my car, until you realize it's towed, much like these signs, right? So, you walk out there, and someone's like, someone stole my sign. You don't know if it's nefarious or, or what. Would it be feasible or smart, and I guess it's kind of for the council and you to, to kind of elucidate, is, can we make like a sticker, kind of like when a car is abandoned on the highway? Police put a sticker that says you've abandoned your car, you have twenty-four hours to get it out. Can we put a sticker on these signs, so zoning enforcement could pick them up, lay them down, slap a sticker on there, that says you're in violation of whatever code, please refer to the code at this website, it needs to be removed immediately, something like that, to kind of give people like, oh, okay, now I know why it's taken down. Now I have a resource to say where the plan is for me to make sure I don't violate it again. I don't know, that's just, I'm trying to think outside the boxes.
Two, two comments to that. We, the planning zoning office consists of town planner and a zoning enforcement officer, two, two people doing the entire work of the entire department. To go around patrolling signs on a daily basis around town, it's unfeasible. There's not enough hours in the day, hours in the week to do that. So, if that's something that, to be explored, then, then we will need some additional staff to, to handle that workload. Also, as far as take, pulling signs out of the ground, the, the small flimsy ones are easy to pull up. But in the efforts last year, there were some very large signs with very big metal posts holding them up. And, you know, I'm, I'm an able body, I did, I did okay pulling them up, but I know Maureen wouldn't be able to, and very, and it would require some, some, some strength to pull them out of the ground and lay them down in a way that they, they wouldn't be damaged, so.
But what did you do with them in the first place? Did you took them out and you took them?
We had, the big ones, we had Public Works come with trucks and, and help with that effort.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious, from our town attorney's perspective. So, we were looking at doing an ordinance, we kind of backed off from the ordinance, and we sort of kicked it to planning and zoning. So, now we're back at planning and zoning, and they may not have the staff to do it. I'm just curious what other towns do. Most towns have an ordinance, Jennifer, or?
All, all towns have a sign ordinance.
Okay.
In terms of the level of detail and the legality of them, as I think I talked about in the ordinance committee meeting.
And I've, I've talked into other fellow planners throughout town, throughout the towns in Connecticut, and when they, when we mention political side, they snicker and say, oh, we don't touch them.
Yeah, well, I, so, let's, I mean, not even political, other signs that may be there for other things. So, let's say we have an ordinance that prohibits whatever, whatever sign it prohibits. Who would, who's going to enforce the ordinance?
Typically, it is the zoning enforcement officer, because it's a zoning regulation. That's where you find them.
Right. An ordinance is not.
Well, the sign, sign regulation is typically within a zoning ordinance or within a zoning regulation, and it is typically the zoning enforcement officer who is enforcing. I, I could say that about most towns. I've looked at many sign wrecks.
Right.
Doing research and giving advice.
And to, to that point, the location of the sign may be a zoning violation deemed by the zoning enforcement officer, and it should be treated like any other zoning, zoning violation. If there is a property that is deemed unsightly, hasn't been taken care of, the zoning enforcement officer doesn't go take the lawn mower and cut the grass. You know, we notify the property owner, and they have time, they have to recognize.
But if it's on a public, public right of way, who would we notify? Whoever's on the sign, I guess?
Whoever's.
Yeah, in, in terms of, you would notify the property owner that it's in the public right of way, and it's causing a sightline issue.
How do we know who put it on a public right of way if they just stuck it somewhere?
Well, regardless, it's the property owner that needs to address it. They may have tenants who are putting up signs, but if it presents a sightline issue, that's a hazard. You know, as, look, I mean, every town goes through this. You know, there's certain roadways in every town that people like to put signs because of the traffic that they get, and they think, you know, they're getting bang for their buck. But, you know, I think what, what the town manager is saying, who's also the town planner, is that, you know, that they have a limited amount of time to spend on enforcement because they're processing applications, and they feel strongly that they can only act on complaints and not go out and look for the violations. But, you know, certainly, if signs are presenting a sightline hazard and they get a call, they're going to get out there.
Would it be possible to have an award say, the signs are allowed within the town right of way or closer than ten feet to the curb? You know, that would simplify it for, most people don't know where the street line is, because they're all different. And if we had something like a simplified gauge, stay at least ten feet from the curb, and you're pretty safe, you know. I'm just picking a number, Public Works would probably help us get it better. I just think it needs to be really, really simple. Down on, on the commotion, it makes less work for your department and less aggravation for the people involved with the sign.
Simple and clear.
Yeah, there are, there are zoning regulations that require sight, sightlines to be maintained at road intersections.
I know there's lots and lots of.
So, we can, we can add that to the.
Guy putting a sign in the ground isn't going to read all of that. He needs three simple things, is it this far from the curb, can, you know, is it a proper language, you know, whatever? And they think they're pretty safe, because what I'm, there are two things. I want to stop the arguing over the signs, and I want to cut down on the work for your department. You have better things to do than worry about a sign.
So, you know what, let's go back, let's do, let's talk about an ordinance, and maybe we'll do a real simple one like that, because I think we talked about that. Couple towns we looked at were simple, right? Go back, you're hating, you're hating it, then we're going to talk about it again, and she's like, no! We'll, we'll get it, quick, quick.
I'll bring my sign redwells that I have.
Simple, simple.
I probably have a half a dozen of them filled with.
Let's keep it real simple, all right?
Okay.
And hopefully, we'll solve that problem.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Already, I already talked about the cat trapping on eighty-nine, so we're just skip that.
You don't want to hear it again?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them, but. On June eleventh, last Tuesday, the town completed a general obligation bond and bond anticipation note sales, based on the town's recent rating upgrade. note sales based on the town's recent rating upgrade, AAA status. We received a favorable interest and, and with a favorable interest rate environment, the town is able to secure a one and 1.52% net increase interest rate on the bond and a one and three quarters net interest rate on the notes. The, both the rates are favorable compared to other recent municipal bond sales in Connecticut and favorable to most recent bonds. No, no sale in September of, of last year, which was 2.1, 2.1% rate. So, it's looking up.
Yeah, that's-
It was, it was a win.
Yeah, that's a win, win. How many towns have, how many towns have AAA rating? Do we know? Is that common?
The good ones have it.
Yeah, the good, the well-managed.
Oh, I know. All right, well, that's, I guess we're one of the good ones then, huh? It's a good thing.
And I just wanted to take this opportunity, having, having your attention, to talk a little bit about Sustainable CT. What that is, is a, it's a new program. It's a vol, it's a voluntary certification program to recognize thriving and resilient Connecticut municipalities. It's independently funded, it's a municipal effort and it, and it provides a menu of best practices, ranges from economic development to nature preservation, open space preservation and community building. Municipalities can choose from a list of actions that this program offers and they can implement them and then earn points towards a certification. The certi, and a certification also provides additional grant, grant funding. Last year was the first year that towns were able to get certification. Twenty-two towns in Connecticut got certification. It was 17 bronze and five silver certifications. It's a two-tier program. Towns in the area that got a bronze certification are Middletown, Bristol and West Hartford and Glastonbury and Hartford both earned silver certification. So, and there's many more towns going to be applying this year and then I think maybe we can explore the opportunity of applying in 2020. And, but I've been to a couple of training workshops on this. I sent Maureen to one recently this, last Friday that discussed housing and transportation specifically. But it's very clear that if Berlin wants to participate in this program, it really needs a top-down, top-down effort. It needs to come from mayor, town council to, to, to promote and, and emphasize the importance of this. And then with that, it could trickle down to the other boards of commission, town staff to evaluate the, the, the opportunities to enhance the town, these, approach these action steps and, and get this, get, earn certification. A lot of the action steps the town may already be doing and can get credit right away. Some of them could be things that we can look to doing in the future. But it would really require each board or commission or town department to evaluate their area of expertise and, and, and see what, how their efforts can fit into the program. So, I'm not really looking for anything from you now. I just want to take this opportunity to share this program-
Appreciate that.
-with the, with the town council and I think it's something that's worthwhile doing.
Sounds like-
A lot of other towns are working on it.
Yeah. This, we go in, when, when, when do you put, so now, what would you put the next, like if we put an application in or whatever?
The applications are due in August.
Oh, okay.
So I, I don't think we have enough time to-
For this coming, got to do the next, the following year.
So, we'd, we'd go for 2020.
Okay.
But, you know, the efforts can start right away.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. We'll have to look at it.
We can, I can bring this to another town council. If, if, if I'm getting encouraged, I can get a little more information and-
Yeah, maybe just a little bit in some of these different, you know, we got time, obviously, but whenever we have some time on our council agenda, maybe just to tell us what, what, what do we need to do specifically? You know? So we have some thoughts and we could go towards that-
Okay.
Goal.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Mark. Did it?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it? All right, so thank you for that, appreciate that. We are on council communications. I'm supposed, special committee reports, I'm sorry. We had, well, we had the joint meeting with the, with the Conservation Commission and, and the ordinance committee. Leash law by Centennial Park, we need to have some more discussion at the ordinance committee after that particular meeting, so we'll have that at our next ordinance committee to be determined when that is. Hopefully, maybe we'll try and get one in, in July before our August break. A good date. Soon. That's, is there any other special committees? Nobody met, right?
No.
Okay. Council Communications.
I just wanted to mention the, the 50th McGee Celebration, Anniversary Celebration.
Yeah.
I thought that that was outstanding.
Great.
Yeah, Sal Urso, the principal, did a great job. Kevin Cormack and, God, what's his name? Paul Griswold put together a great slideshow.
That was fun stuff.
Sal Urso and a bunch of musicians, most of them, people that came through the, the Berlin School System played, you know, live while the, the slideshow was playing and then they had some great tables set up that went, you know, decade by decade over the last 50 years and Brian Plona helped with those, so. But it was, it was really well organized, outstanding, they had a pretty good crowd, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, it was great.
It was wonderful.
Fun, fun time.
It was.
The school, honestly, for all those years, still looks pretty good.
Yeah, it does.
It doesn't, needs some work, but it, it looks, held up very well, right?
It has, yeah.
Over these years?
It was interesting to see-
Right, yeah, right?
But it was interesting to see too how much has changed since 1916.
Oh, my goodness.
It was, it was-
It's a whole different world.
Yeah.
It's a whole different world.
It's remarkable.
Anyway, yeah, it was good. Any else?
Yes, sir.
I've been approached by a couple of residents, a couple of contractors. There seems to be a log jam every year at this time. People want to get their summer projects going and they can't get their building permits.
Oh.
We're kind of, is there any way to expedite things? Maybe because you're tied up doing manager things or, you know, maybe you need an extra part timer or something, but if we could get them moving, people would really appreciate
it. Always support getting extra help in the Planning and Zoning Office.
Somehow we got to get the, I know we have 30 days to issue a permit, but if we don't have to take it, people would really appreciate that, especially if they're trying to get a pool in or something like that.
Yeah. It's when people provide the right information, complete applications, right off the bat, it makes the review time a lot quicker.
Do we have, there again, do we have a checklist for them?
We do have a checklist.
Simplify that.
Yeah.
Well, do what you can.
Absolutely. Can you just tell us, next time, what the backlog is? Or just get, just an email on just-
I mean, the, I mean, the-
Will we know?
The standard answer for, for applications that require zoning review is, is a two-week turnaround.
Oh, all right, okay.
It's, seems reasonable. It can be longer.
Longer than that, I don't know if it's true or not.
If it, if it's longer than that, it's because applications are incomplete.
It's a problem.
And we, whenever some, it's incomplete, we reach out to the applicant and then we wait for them to respond. And sometimes people see that as it's taking too long when-
Citing, whatever, seeing the, the more we can expedite this for people.
Absolutely, I've-
Thank you.
I would prefer to have them turn around as quickly as possible.
I have something, short little snippet, but I don't know if it's an unintended benefit of the Burnham Street Bridge closing down, but driving through Main Street with, like where Dairy Queen and the coffee shop is, I see a lot of commotion and traffic there and a lot of people walking and I don't know, when I see people walking, it, to me, it means they're, you know, spending time and money there and adding to the livelihood of the, of that area. And I was almost thinking, man, what if Burnham Street stayed closed? Hey, I, I, it's those listening out there, I'm just kidding. But, you know-
Puts a lot of people off if we did that.
It just seems nice, like, and I hope that new TOD development has that feeling too, where it's, you know, it's all bricks and there's a beautiful island in the middle and it just adds to that Berlin charm. You know what I mean? And I've been saying that to the developers of the new thing, like, hey, make sure you add brick and nice lamp posts and that look just really adds that X factor. But I, I kind of feel it, like I'm driving through that Main Street area and I'm just, I see people and kids hanging a Dairy Queen and tons of people and younger kids even going to the coffee shop and the restaurants there, it just, I don't know, it's really cool to see it.
We're looking at opportunities to provide additional outdoor dining, outdoor seating.
Yeah, anything you can, because I think people are-
In the sidewalks or on areas.
No pun intended, really hungry for it. I think people really want that in town. People come up to me numerous times and say, you know, what's going on in town? And I'm really excited about that development and-
Oh, me too.
Seeing this is really cool, so let's just keep the positive things going.
Really exciting.
I agree.
How's that coffee shop doing? They just doing good, you think?
They're always busy, there's always-
They're great. I love going in there. Really nice.
I asked the guy, I went in there, it's great coffee, first off.
Yeah.
It's great. And I asked him, I said, how you doing? He goes, I am too busy. I can't keep up.
Oh, good.
That's a good thing.
Oh, that's great.
So I think it's doing, like, anytime you drive, there's always people there, there's always-
Yeah, it looks crowded, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's-
My wife's been there a couple of times, yeah.
Couple of the bricks from the crosswalk have ripped up because of the plow. I don't know if those can be replaced, just because, you know-
Yeah, they're, Public Works is working.
Yeah, we want to show that, you know, we're on top of it because, you know, there's going to be more people and kids and stuff.
I really think that median, those medians were badly designed, so I wish what we could do, I don't know how much this would cost, but what I saw in a lot of towns and to me, it's kind of narrow there, it would be great, and we'd keep them. We'd keep them, but instead of having the granite edge, what a lot of towns do is the bricks flow into the road, so it's even. There's a little mound in the middle, so even if the cars are over the road a little bit, it doesn't hurt anything, doesn't hurt the car, doesn't-
You're not taking a curb, you're just kind of bumping up.
Right, you're just bumping it up a little bit and you can still put some flower pots up on the hill of the, of the-
We do have a plan to modify that area to address a lot of those concerns.
Okay.
The first, the plan includes taking the first island at the top of the hill-
Yeah.
Putting that down to grade.
Oh, good, okay, great.
So, at the very least, emergency vehicles can-
Yes, well, that's another concern, of course, always.
And there's one other island that would be taken down to grade to provide better access into the driveways-
Oh, good, okay.
-to the south side.
Did you ever get the parking they were talking about back there?
There, the plan does include moving the handicap parking spot to the other side of the ro, road.
Was there some discussion of, of using parking behind the buildings?
Um, yes. We-
I wouldn't know.
Went through a tremendous effort to work with the property owners and our consultant to come up with a plan to repave, repave, re-landscape, restripe the, the parking to the rear of those buildings. We had designs, we had legal documents drafted, we came up, we designed the plan of how to work through the approval process. It got kiboshed when property owners weren't willing to agree to a new parking lot, you know, a, at the town's expense, at the town's expense with grant fund, with grant funding.
Yeah, because we were going to use grant-
We had, we had money.
Yeah, right.
I don't understand.
And they, they wanted dedicated parking spots, but-
To their businesses?
To the, to the businesses. Jack was negotiating one to two per building, but some buildings were a little bigger than the others, so they weren't think, they weren't think they were being fair, fairly allocated. And it's going, it was going to be a municipal parking lot, parking for everybody-
Right.
-frequenting the, the downstairs-
Yeah.
The downtown.
Right.
But the second that we give away too much of dedicated parking, the town would only be getting a couple of spaces and with all the maintenance costs and, and, and the cost of-
That's private property.
It's private property.
We were going to fork over some money.
We're going to fix it and maintain it for them.
Oh, boy. You know, trying to help the business owners there, you would think they would be-
They got something and now they got nothing.
Yeah, they, it would have been a good, maybe we can go back and revisit that or is it dead?
We've, we've moved on to Plan C or D or whatever-
Oh, really?
Now.
I know you've been working hard on it.
Make these improvements to the-
To the, to the street.
And provide sidewalk improvements along New Britain.
Yeah, I mean, it's too bad because it would be a great solution to that area and parking and I, you know, I tell people that all the time. Many times we have solutions for Farmington Avenue, but it all is private property and when land, you know, landowners, business owners don't, you know, building owners don't want, you know, they're, they can do what they want to do with their private property, they could charge the kind of rents that they want to charge and the lease payments they want and there's not a lot we could do about that. We could work with them only, only, I guess so far. And this, I know we put in a tremendous effort, I know, we really did and, all right, well, we, we're trying, we'll keep trying, I guess. Anything else? Yes?
So I have one question. When is the zoning or is there a zoning hearing for the property for, I believe it might